So, following the workshop in November, we, you know, took the issues that were raised at the meeting and those that were raised, you know, informally to staff and met with Mr. Mueller and others, including the State Historic Preservation Officer and a representative from the Corps of Engineers to address the ordinance. I had already revised the ordinance to address the concerns and so they saw the revised ordinance. And there didn't seem to be any issues related to the substance of the ordinance. The main issue was making sure that our historic districts are also designated on our own Landmarks Register. I don't know if you're aware of this, but if you get a district and it's a National Registered District or a National Landmark District by the federal government, that's purely honorary. It doesn't come with any restrictions. What makes the restrictions is us designating it and us regulating our designated landmarks, if that makes any sense. So, what I presented to you was the two ordinances. One is just to ratify and make sure everybody knows what the boundaries of the two districts are, and that's the first ordinance. And then the second is the main ordinance, which basically goes through and adjusts all those issues that folks had problems with. And I think it's a much cleaner ordinance at this point. And I think the main assurance to you is that any landmark, which there are, I put some totals up here, there are eighty-nine total St. Genevieve landmarks. Nine of those are in this area, kind of west of Seventh Street. And those are on the Landmark Register, but those are the only things that we would regulate in this particular area. And within, now instead of adjacent, because that was difficult to articulate, one hundred and eighty-five feet. You take the building and go one hundred and eighty-five feet around it and see what's around there. And if your house is next door, then you would have to come through the Certificate of Appropriateness process. That one hundred and eighty-five feet is a standard that is used in the state law for planning purposes, for noticing, so we thought it was a good metric to use, because it already has a basis in the state law. All the other structures, non-contributing structures within the National Registered District and anything that's not within those circles, basically would just be reviewed either by me or not reviewed at all. And I've given you a summary of those things, but I think the assurance to you that every historic landmark on the register and every contributing structure to the National Registered District, which is six hundred and fifty-five structures, will remain regulated the way they always have been. If anything, we'll ask for a little bit higher level of review when somebody wants to replace a major portion of their structure, like a roof or all the windows, something like that. So, that's about it. I don't know if there's any other questions. Any questions?
The table's gonna fall down.
The question I had from someone was the concern of the commission being five members now instead of seven, which means a quorum would be three and then a majority vote would be two people. Now, we talked about this before.
Petrie wasn't at the meetings where that discussion...
But I think the main reason for that is finding more than that that want to actually be on...
Two things, that's one of them, is that one of the commissioners, existing commissioners, thinks that people who serve on landmarks should be schooled in the issues related to landmarks. And not just a warm body who volunteered their time. The larger the board, the harder it is to fill it with qualified people. The second reason is getting a quorum. The, I don't know that it's easier to get four, three of five than it is four of seven, but that was one of the issues they had. Your point was never discussed and I think is an excellent. But now you've kind of made it possible for two people to be calling the shots.
Which can be scary, but if you've got the right people on the committee, then maybe they'll all be there for the meetings.
I think we could solve that problem by requiring three affirmative votes to approve any certificate.
Yeah, you could say a majority of the commission, regardless of how many show up.
Instead of a majority of the quorum.
Right.
That would be better. Three instead of two would be better.
Did we address, we probably addressed before, but maybe we even talked about demolition outside, anywhere in the city limits? That's been eliminated?
What I've done is, because, this sort of came up recently. We had a house that was actually within the H-2 zone, but was not a landmark, or at least we didn't think it was a landmark. They came before the, you know, they got all the approvals, they got landmarks approvals, they got the board approval to demolish the building at Seven Fifty Market. I'm sure you all are aware of that building. And at the last minute, I got a call from one of the commission members, "You know, could you go in there and just make sure that it's not a vertical log cabin that we somehow missed in all of our surveying?" And so, Bob Benel, our inspector, and I went in and we kind of tore apart part of the wall with the official, with the owner's permission, of course. And sure enough, it was just your regular frame structure, and so it's now gone. So, what I've done in here regarding demolitions that aren't landmarks or contributing structures is, when somebody comes in to get their demolition permit, they basically have to say, "I've looked at this building and I have, I'm gonna attest that I don't believe it has historic significance." Now, what happens if the bulldozer comes, knocks one wall, and we find out, "Oh, my gosh, it's a vertical log, it's, you know, two-hundred years old, what are we gonna do?" It gives me authority to, and a commission member to ask me for authority, to go forward and do a 24-hour stop order. That gives me time to talk to the owner, say, "Can we work something out?" Or to find somebody that could come in, maybe swoop in and buy it to prevent it from going. But it gives us a stay for 24 hours, so that if we can protect the resource, we can protect it. But once they attest that they don't believe the house is historic, we don't really have anything else to go on. I mean, you know, we don't go into these houses and say, "Well, let me tear down a part of the wall and see." I mean, demolition comes forward because they don't really believe there's any value for the most part, or it's falling down, what have you. And they may not know exactly what's underneath, but they should attest to that. And once they do, we're, you know, we'd be compelled to allow the demolition.
Petrie, what's the reality of a miss? I mean, it seems to me that there would be a very small reality of a miss.
I agree, there was a 1986 survey by the University of Missouri that looked at many, many structures within the city. But apparently, it was not that long ago when landmarks approved a demolition, and lo and behold, it was a vertical log structure.
More than four years ago.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's very, very rare. But nevertheless, in that circumstance, there's a provision for that, that they still would have to attest that they don't think the building is historic and should have made some effort to determine that. And I can look at records and see if it's on any list, but I can't get into the building and actually investigate.
You could with their permission, right?
With their permission, like, yeah.
It's like, if they want to tear it down, are they really gonna care if you take part of a wall out?
Right, right.
His question was not that, because what about buildings in age thirty?
Roser addition, point base before, before...
All demolitions would have, still have to go through this process, because we don't know if...
Well, before anything, any demolition, anywhere in the city limits, had to go before landmarks, which was kind of ridiculous.
And it still would.
No, we don't want that. I mean...
Well, that provides for that, and I'm just saying, is if it came, like, it was a house here, I would have them attest that they don't believe it's historically significant. And if it isn't, then we go ahead and tear it down, but if in the process, somehow we figure out that it is historic, we never knew it was there, it would give us a 24-hour window.
They don't have to get a certificate of appropriateness to tear down a structure that was bought fifteen years ago from Sears and Roebuck.
The difference would be you're the gatekeeper.
Right, right.
And so, that would stop the...
The way to go before landmarks.
Yeah, there may be out there somewhere an old slave house. We don't know that. And if somebody comes in outside of the area and asks for permission, and we go look at it and we go, "No, we think this is a..." Then it would have to go to landmark. But barring that observation and conclusion on the part of the staff, they just come to you for demolition.
It's like a brick ranch house in the newer section of town. That's not ever gonna have to go through landmarks, right?
If it's questionable, I would hope that our gatekeepers would, you know, really look hard. So, I would have confidence that you would, so I'm totally okay with that.
So, the, like, the house at Seven Fifty Market was very tiny, and there were other houses around there that are log houses. So, I get, I felt kind of a little thing in my stomach when we approved it and really didn't have a date on it. We knew what the owner said it was dated, but I didn't have any records that showed that that was dated. So, I'm glad we went in there, fleas and all, but...
I would think that any homeowner that would, you asked, "Hey, can I come inside and look?", would grant you that permission unless they were...
They've got something to hide.
Yeah, trying to be sneaky about something.
And that's why...
And that would be the red flag to kick it up.
Right. Or, you know, to be there during the demolition. I mean, I like to be there for the demolition, so that the first, you know, hit, we really find out. But I don't think, I really don't think that that's gonna happen at all and possibly never. So, but I wanted to make sure that we had some process in here for that.
Petrie, Bob, did you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, I think in looking at over this whole thing, demolition is one of the key areas, I disagree. I think your thing, as you've written it now, in paragraph four-ten, two-fifty, A, three, says, "Any demolition within the city limits." It says, "A certificate of appropriateness shall be required before the following projects may be undertaken." So, to me, that says, "Any demolition," if I would read that, would be, you would have to have a certificate of appropriateness.
Well, it refers back to the level of review and the administrator shall review all applications for demolition of structures. So, it's semantics, whether it's a certificate of appropriateness or just an okay, and so...
The other thing I would comment on, when you look at demolition, the definition of demolition, I think you've confused two things. It can be demolition, though I think you've also thrown demolition by neglect in there. You say, the last part of that paragraph says, "If it's a landmark and it's not held in good repair and maintenance," somebody's gonna come in and ask for a certificate of appropriateness for that, to leave it go downhill? I think you should really clean up that demolition part a little bit to really identify what you want to do there. Because I guess when I read that section of, "When you need certificates of appropriateness", it says, "For any demolition." And I think your definition of demolition, you're gonna have to handle demolition by neglect in a different way.
Yeah, I mean, technically, under two-fifty, or, I'm sorry, two-sixty-A, the commission reviews projects that are referring to landmarks or contributing structures, and that includes demolitions. And projects within one hundred and eighty-five feet and exterior projects on non-contributing buildings is, also includes demolition. And then C relates to demolition of all other structures. I agree that the demolition definition does have in there about demolition by neglect, and I can piece those two out.
But I think if you go up to A four, or A three, it says, "Any demolition within the city limits." And then you take it out below, I don't understand why.
It says, "Not otherwise subject to regulation." C does. So, it's anything that's not A or B. I mean, that's the way I intended it.
I think he's looking up here.
Oh, okay.
So, it's under...
It says, "It shall be required."
Yes, yes.
So, you're saying you have to have it, and then you're saying, "No, you don't."
No, I don't believe, I don't, that was not the intent.
No, I'm just pointing out some inconsistencies. The other thing is, there's been actually two instances. One was the property, the vertical log on the Figgy property, and the second one was the horizontal log cabin, which is even more rare in St. Genevieve, out on the Dunsey property. Both of them went through landmarks and went through the process, but they were not on the list of structures that the University of Missouri had presented back in eighty-eight. So, we do have things that are covered up that we don't know about, and that's why you do have to be careful. I recognize that maybe something on the rosar addition, which was developed in the, you know, 50s and stuff, may not have it, but in some of our older areas, you never know what you're gonna find.
Yeah, the demolition by neglect is kind of difficult, because you're right, there's not a way to do a certificate of appropriateness for somebody just abandoning their building and wanting it to fall down. I mean, I think that that needs to be parceled out from the demolition definition, for sure. And that should have happened, and I apologize about that. And I'll fix this other issue to make sure there's not any crossover issues.
The only thing I would like to see is, and I brought this up before, anything that would be just the administrator to make sure that, you know, and nothing against Petrie or nothing against Bob, if he's the one doing it, but if Petrie gets the application, then Bob has to sign off on it, or Martin, or if Bob gets it, then Petrie, you know, I want, I'd like for two people...
I think that's in there.
It's in here.
Oh, it is in there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a 24-hour secondary signature thing.
By the administrator.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a checks and balances type of thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That way, we don't have one that just says...
No, and I put in there that I would have him review it within 24 hours, or Martin to review it within 24 hours, because the whole idea of this is to make things simpler for a lot of people. So, you know, you don't want to hang things up if he's not, if Martin isn't around, you know, for, he's on vacation, although he rarely does that. He just did that, but I haven't seen you gone for very often. So, you know, I mean, that way, there's a second on it and, but I don't want to hold the project up if Martin would be gone for a while.
I mean, even Bob's, you know, having two people looking at it and two people signing on it, I don't really care who those two people are.
Is this one where the, it could be administrator or designee, and that way, like, say if Martin would be on vacation, he could designate Bob to be his second signature or whatever?
Yeah, I can figure, yeah, figure that out.
Okay.
Bob, do you have any other thoughts or concerns?
The only other one that I have...
Get right in there, buddy, so you don't run out of time.
No, it was basically, I think any decision made by the administrator has to be documented, whether she does it, says, "No certificate of appropriateness is required" or approves something, there should be a, you know, who it was, the date, and the rationale for it, and a log be kept of that. And the other thing I think is, any applicant should get a written response, whether it's, you know, you get a certificate of appropriateness, that's all signed, but we should also give a letter or something that when somebody, if you say it's not needed, we get a letter for that, so we know what kind of decisions are being made over a period of time.
It keeps everything clean.
Right. The other things are just, I call them housekeeping things. Paragraph four-ten, oh-fifty, membership, is the board liaison member a voting member or not? Some boards, they are, some they aren't. You gotta decide on that. And these are things that are gonna keep the historic commission operating a little more freely. Does the election of officers require the vote of at least a majority of the members of the commission? That's on other boards that we have. And lastly, I think you put in there that if the chair and vice chair aren't there, the city administrator can be, act as the chair. Now, does he or she have voting privileges at that point or not? I think you need to just, it'll help the commission down the road if you make the decisions on how you want to run those three housekeeping issues, and it'd just be better on, for the committee.
Thanks, Bob.
Otherwise, you've done some good work.
Petrie, I think you've done a lot of good work here.
Thank you for listening to the comments of all the citizens and everything that we put forth to you at the last...
Oh, no problem.
At the last meeting, and I just want to say, I appreciate the work of everybody who was on this committee to get this done.
I just wanted to point out, and I intend, and what I've done in the past, is that it does include in here during, about my duties or my positions duties, is that I do, you know, document and report the decisions that I make. I didn't detail it in exactly those terms, but that's...
So, even if it's a, you don't need a certificate, that's gonna be documented?
Right, right, it's gonna be documented. So, like, if I've had somebody come in, and, for example, today, we had somebody who has a flat roof that you can't even see, and they're just gonna patch it, I just wrote, "No certificate needed," because it's just a roof repair, it's not a replacement or anything, and it's not even anything that could be seen. So, I usually would write it right on the permit with my initials. I think, again, we have to think about how, I mean, I think for sure, if somebody has denied something, a letter should be generated, but again, this is supposed to make things easier for people, not necessarily harder. And so, I would caution about having to do a full-fledged report for every review...
I think almost a form letter. If I was gonna do something and you came out and talked to me, and you said, "You're okay, go ahead and do it," I would not be all right with that.
Oh, I wouldn't do that just orally. I wouldn't do that just orally.
Not you, but anybody. I would want some document in my hands dated that said, "Someone responsible from the city said I could go, I can move forward." So, it could be a really a form letter.
Well, it would be a certificate, it would be a certificate of appropriateness in most cases.
Or you could do this without one of them.
Or, yeah, this is not, a certificate is not even required.
Yeah, so I think, and not just in city government, but in a lot of things around here, people that have been part of an organization for a long time have things in their head that they haven't written down. And then, you know, what if that person is no longer in that position, unavailable to give that information later, it needs to be documented somewhere.
Cleans up the process. No chance for me to come back and say, "Well, what's your name that used to be here, says it's okay?"
Yeah, I hear that a lot.
That's why, that's exactly why I brought that up.
Except it was usually, it's not, it's... You couldn't do it, you know, so...
That's exactly why I mentioned that. Good work.
Well, thank you. It's complicated, it'd be a lot easier if we just had one district, because it's two, it's a little bit more complicated, but whatever you want.
She'll make those revisions, and the revised ordinance will be before you at your meeting in twenty seconds.
Outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Big project, it's nice to have, you know, to get a touch of closure on it.
She actually is such a busy girl.
No, no, no.
Well, I've spent your hard work earlier today, she's like, "Oh, it wasn't really me."
It's what you guys wanted.
I'll talk to you about that. I have a whole, like...
Take credit for the work you do.
Well, it started six-thirty.
Oh. Just pulled it out of the closet.
Yeah.
Fortunately. Yeah, you got this chair. I live in... You look at my arm, get that little... What? What did? I'm sorry.
At least you saw.
I didn't know I did. I apologize.
Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was...
It's a good...
Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was...
What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah. Sucks, right? Hey, Mark, I'm here to give you a word, I think it was... What is it? Yeah.[1537.16]
catch it at the next meeting, the two appointments to the Channel 798 Board that were supposed to have been on this, but I don't think it's that critical. We'll catch it at the next meeting.
That'll take place before our next meeting.
Okay. I guess we have any presentation. Tonight, we got Mr. Jeff Stroder, who's with our auditing firm to present and answer any questions we might have on our annual audit.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, I just appreciate the opportunity to come meet with you all this evening and explain what you've got in your audit reports. It's kind of a nice chance to tell you about what's in that report. It's such interesting reading, but I think I can probably give you a good idea of what's in there in just a few minutes. We do appreciate the chance to do the city's audit again this year and enjoy working with the city. The, what we've got in the report basically are two reports that we issue. The first report is a report on the financial statements. It starts out by explaining that the responsibility for the financial statements belongs to the city. City's responsible for these numbers. My job as the auditor is to give an opinion on whether or not these financial statements are fairly stated. It explains the standards that we adhere to while we conduct our audit, and then the opinion part is that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. So, that's the technical language that's in there. What that is, is an unmodified report or a clean report. That's the one that everybody's looking for. The report goes on to explain that there is some supplementary information that's included in the report over and above what just a basic set of financial statements are. There are some consolidating statements for the non-major funds in the back, and there's some budget-to-actual comparisons, additional information. It explains that we've also applied procedures to those statements as well, and that we believe they are also fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the financial statements. The last part of that report explains that there's a little bit more information close to the front of the report. It's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is written by the city, and it's supposed to be kind of a plain English narrative of what happened during the last year. Now, we don't actually apply procedures to that part of the report, and that's what it explains, that our opinion doesn't actually cover that report, but it does tell that we've read through it and we've looked at it, and if we had seen something that we thought looked out of place, we would've worked that out with the city in advance. So, even though it doesn't have an opinion on it, we've looked at it and we didn't see anything that would create a problem. So, that's the first report that we have in the financial statements. The second report has to do with the city's internal controls over financial matters and compliance. We don't actually issue an opinion on the internal controls, but what that report explains is that for us to be able to do our audit, conduct the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we gotta know how the transactions work. How do we get from a receipt coming in or a check going out to actually becoming a number that makes up these financial statements? We're looking at the processes. We have to understand it to be able to plan our tests and conduct our tests, and that while we're doing that, while we're obtaining that, understanding how it works, if we see anything that we believe would be a deficiency or a material weakness on how we're, how the controls work, this is the report where we would explain those weaknesses or deficiencies. And it explains there that we did not find any material weaknesses and that we didn't have any other instances to report. So, there's also a section then that follows up that has to do with the city's compliance with laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements, anything that would be more financial in nature, and it explains there that we also found no instances of non-compliance with any of those things that we were testing. So, those are the two reports that we've got with the financials. Like I said, the financial statements are the responsibility of the city. When we were doing our work, we will look to see if there are any adjustments that need to be made to the financial statements that we start with, and I do not remember any significant adjusting entries that we proposed. So, that tells me that the financial statements that you've been working with and relying on as the year goes on are fairly close to what we've got here. So, that tells me that that information's reliable for you. So, that's why I always pass along whether or not we had to make any significant adjustments to the numbers to be able to put the report together. So, I wanted you to know that. The financial statements themselves, I generally don't spend a lot of your meeting time going over the numbers. I know you've reviewed the reports on a monthly basis and you're familiar with those, so there's not a lot of need for me to rehash anything. The rest of the report then would be the footnotes that just offers more detailed information about what's in those financial statements. So, we were just kind of talking about, right before the meeting, that we didn't have any recommendations to make this year on the report, and as I was going back through my notes this afternoon to prepare for the meeting night, I was almost a little surprised we didn't even have any oral recommendations that we make. A lot of times, if we just run across little tiny things that we think we could offer a suggestion on for improvement, we'll make notes of those things, and we didn't even have any of those in our notes this year. So, that was kind of a surprise to me. Most of the times, most cities that I go to, we have few things to talk about. So, I thought that spoke real highly of how the audit went, and I wanted to pass that along to you all. You know, as, I think most of you've heard me talk about this before, we do enjoy working on this audit. For one thing, that we don't have a lot of recommendations to make. The folks that we work with are very professional to work with. They are always very helpful, courteous, and try to get answers for us as quick as possible. I like to joke with the folks that I figured they probably just know the sooner we get our answers, the sooner we'll go away. So, maybe that's it. But I wanted to pass along to you all, in case you don't have the chance to be up here as the business day is going on all the time, just that that's kind of the impression that we get from our time working here with the city. You know, I've kind of gone through things quickly, but that's because there wasn't a whole lot to discuss this year. But I would offer that if anybody has any questions about what we were doing or how we were doing our test or something, I'd be glad to try to...
This usually takes, like, two or three days, is that correct? Or does it not take that long? I'm just curious.
I'm trying to think where, was it, I would say, was it at least three days? It might've been part of the fourth day.
Three or four people?
We had three people on, we had three people on our crew.
Always the same people, though. It's the same switch off.
Right. The gentleman who was what I would call the lead auditor of the fieldwork, he's been with us for about 15 or 16 years now, and he leads a lot of our governmental jobs, a lot of our cities and a couple counties, and he's been doing this quite some time. I think he's been here working with the city for a while, so he's kind of been doing this long enough. He knows what records he wants, he knows who has them, and how the things are supposed to work together, and I think that works really good to maybe cut down on some of our questions while we're trying to figure out how things work. We kind of, we've already got that understanding from the previous years, and I hope that makes things a little more efficient for the people that we're bothering. I know they've got a job to do, and they're pretty gracious about stopping what they're doing to answer our questions and help us find things. But I know it's got to be a disruption for them to have to deal with us.
Well, I think also that during the year, don't, if there's a question about anything, don't you always call down there to kind of check all the stuff?
Return the compliment. We get excellent service.
Yeah.
Good. Well, you know, we've had some years where we've had a few comments to make, so you all know that I'm not afraid to speak up whenever I see something to make improvements on, but I do think that that works pretty well throughout the year. It's that unusual transaction that pops up, or maybe there's a question about the budget that you only have to deal with a couple of times a year, and I'm always glad to get those phone calls, and we can, if we don't know an answer, we can find an answer fairly quickly and hope to keep things rolling. You know, like I said, I'm not afraid to make those comments when I see improvements that need to be made, but I'm also one of the auditors that doesn't have to find something to smack somebody on the hands about, you know? If we can help get something the right way in advance, then we're always glad to help.
There you go.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, we tend to focus on things that we need to do better. We're at these meetings in this room, and we have challenges, and this is an excellent opportunity to say thank you to Martin and Sue and the entire city staff. If they didn't do what they were supposed to do and give you what you needed, you couldn't do the wonderful job that you do. And to have confidence in something this important allows us to focus on things that we couldn't if we had to be worried about the city's financial management. Sue, thank you very much. Outstanding job.
Does a good job. Good job.
Do you have any questions for Jeff? And thank you and your team.
Well, we're glad to do it. This is kind of what we do. We do a lot of the governmental audits. We cover school districts and counties that range from near Columbia all the way down to Arkansas, and we enjoy working with the cities and think we've got a handle on what we're doing, so hopefully that helps make things a little better for you all.
This doesn't relate to the audit, but there have recently been several articles in paper where the state auditors come in to towns comparable in size to us or smaller and found deficiencies. We haven't had that experience. Whenever I read those articles, I share them with the staff so that they kind of, we have passed this test. That's kind of my question to you. How do you think we would fare should we get an audit such as that?
That's a good question. I think the city would hold up pretty well with the state. Now, I always caution everybody, keep in mind, when the state auditors come to town, they will have a much lower threshold of what is material. Remember, I was talking about how these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects? When they come to town, they go through everything with such a fine-tooth comb, and the reason they're able to do that is because they are funded with tax dollars and they're not relying on you to pay for that audit. We have actually, in the last couple of years, one of the cities that they had found a problem with was one that we had audited, and I was concerned, but one of the things this, the auditors did tell them, that their financial statement audit was never designed to catch the kind of things that they had noted and that they had found. Of course, I mean, that doesn't make me happy about anything, but because we always like to try to come across every suggestion that we can, but, you know, obviously, the financial statement audit, we're mostly focused with how do we prepare these transactions to generate these financial statements? But it also underscores the need to always be vigilant, always look for the opportunities that might arise, and how can we have controls in place to prevent those opportunities from happening? And I think, you know, we have conversations throughout the year on ways to do that, and I think one of the best pieces of advice I can give you is that you folks are here all year long, and I come in for one week out of the year. The best place to make sure something doesn't happen is here with the people that are here all the time. So, you know, we always caution that vigilance is one of the best things to do to prevent those problems from happening. Now, it's been many years, but I used to be one of those state auditors. I spent four years working for the State Auditor's Office myself. That's where I learned how to do this. It's an excellent training ground. So, I think I've got a little bit of background. Of course, things have changed there a lot since I've been gone, but I think I could offer a little bit of background of preparations that you should have in case something like that would ever happen, that they would ever show up, and that's what we've tried to help you with over the years to get to the point where you are right now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Again, we agree with Tom and says, Sue and Martin and the rest of the staff, I think over the years that I've been mayor, we've been, not that I've got really anything to do with it, but certainly the staff is, we get very few comments and exceptions or anything, and it's always been great, and again, it's not so, something we don't have to worry about. Certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. I'll kind of hit the ones that require some explanation. Petrie's already talked to you about our meeting with the SHIBO and the Corps of Engineers that provided some direction for the revisions to the ordinance. We had a meeting here that CIMA, the State Emergency Management Agency, requested us to host regarding flood mapping for the Saline-Jouacoum watershed, which just kind of comes into St. Genevieve County, and it does include us, but nothing south of us. And so, we had that meeting, and what it basically came down to is that they're gonna be studying all these creeks in the area, and eventually, they'll get the whole state studied. Right now, the flood mapping is based on USGS quad maps, which are not, they're like 10-foot contour intervals, so it's not very detailed. However, our flood maps have been studied, so we hosted them, we talked about it, we cooperated, but it's unlikely to produce any changes in our flood map, although eventually it will affect the flood maps in other parts of the county. And it, you know, but nothing that's currently in the flood hazard area in St. Genevieve is going to be out or the other way around. The Welcome Center, Landmarks Commission had a, hosted a historic tax credit workshop. The mayor and some of you attended. I've been to, this is my third one. It's the first time I really understood the process, so I thought it was very well done. Something, if you decide to use it, it's a lot of detail you have to pay attention to. We had a meeting here of all the parties. You've probably read about the proposal for the school district to get involved in acquiring the ball fields and making improvements to them. We're going to discuss that in closed session because it will involve real estate, so after this meeting, we'll have a closed session to discuss our role in that proposal. We have issued the construction building permits for the nursing home on Progress Park Drive. I have expressed concern, as you've heard, about the fact that we currently don't have an agreement relative to the TIF funds. Jeanette Wood called me day before yesterday and said that, "What do we need to do?" And I said, "I can't give you legal advice, but here's, hire a lawyer, and here's what I think the lawyer should do." So, she said they're getting on that, so hopefully in the near future, they will be coming in with what is, in essence, an amendment to the agreement that you had that adjusts the date so that it's current and redefines the trigger point for the distribution of the funds. The old agreement had them getting a certificate of occupancy before the funds were distributed. That nursing home is not going to be finished by December 20th of 2015, so we're gonna, they're gonna redefine what needs to be done in order for the funds to be distributed. My advice to them, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this board will want to know that if the construction work is sufficiently complete, that the building will be occupied for the purposes it was intended. I mean, every piece of equipment is set or every baseboard is painted, but it's gonna have to be far enough along that you have the assurance that you're getting what you bargained for. The, I talked to the engineer who's been working on the revisions for the trail. MoDOT also talked to him because they're anxious to get them. He promised them by January 22nd. This is for the hiking trail, Main Street Trail. If he gets them, then we can proceed. I received a complaint, not a complaint, a call from a citizen who has been fighting the problem of skunks in the city. There are lots of skunks. I sympathized with her. She asked if there was anything the city could do. I made phone calls to the people she recommended and to others. Eric and I talked about it. It takes a concerted effort to make a dent in the skunk population, and it starts with people depriving them of their food source. And as long as people are feeding the, like, cats and dogs or putting on bird feeders, I mean, the list is long of the things we do, not securing your trash properly, the skunks will be there. Trapping is how you get rid of them, but it's, for everyone you trap, there's one behind it. And there are, both the state and local level, traps available for use to catch the skunks, but as the citizen said, "You know, I've been trapping, and it's just not working." Then you have to close off the dins, sufficient depth, either, and what they recommend is wire mesh that's buried in the ground around your foundation in order to keep them from having a place to burrow. I don't know, I thought I'd bring it to your attention because it's kind of the talk of the town right now, and see what you think, if there's a role for us beyond what Eric and I would like to do, and that's initiate an information and education campaign to address kind of the issues that I just discussed.
Sounds like a logical first step.
Yeah, it's a first step.
Okay, well, we'll do that.
They are a problem.
Eric's right. I know they're a problem.
Yeah.
Eric's, his column in the newsletter, this will be this, and I think we'll have to go beyond that to kind of get a consistent message that really, there's nothing City Hall can do to solve this problem. It's what the citizens have to do in order, as a concerted effort, to solve it. We secured four sponsors for the text casting. They are Bloomsdale Bank, Citizens Electric, MRV Bank, and The Herald. So, on your agenda tonight is an approval of the contract so we can begin the text casting from City Hall. We discussed kind of what our plans are as far as the information dissemination, but we all, all things city.
Yep.
And this will be something that someone has to sign up for, so they're just not gonna get it. They have to sign up to receive it.
No. You have to sign up for it. We're going to notify our current email list for the newsletter. We'll run an ad, we'll get it on the radio, get it on television, we'll get the word out that you can call City Hall and sign up for text casting, and then it'll be kind of whoever does. We expect around 50, just average, 50 texts a year with water issues and road issues and snow routes and openings and closings and the things that we do.
50 per year?
Yeah.
I think that would be a low.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
This says 50 a month.
Or a month, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's about it.
50 a month.
I thought that was...
I spoke to Dennis Gilmore. Emailed him about the report that they're doing. Beth asked me what this paragraph is. That was his response, and what he, basically, we're talking about here is the final report that the Corps of Engineers will repair, will prepare about flood mitigation, and it is from that report that we will negotiate with them the items of work that we can do to help with flooding in the creeks, using the funds that are available to us, and get credit for it should funding become available for further work under the Corps's jurisdiction. So, it'll be spring before they're ready, or summer before they're going to be ready. You declared the fire truck surplus. We had some conversations with the fire department about where to store it. It needs batteries, and we think whoever looks at it ought to be able to start it. It needs batteries, and we think that whoever looks at it ought to be able to start it. So I met with Aldrin Stupi to kind of evaluate what batteries we needed. And we're getting prices on, on the batteries. We'll put a couple of batteries in it so it fires up. And, you know, got a couple, he, John gave me a couple of websites where we can post it, and there's some publications for fire equipment, auction sites where you can put it on. So we'll get the word out that it's available, as is, where is. People who need to come, that are interested to come look at it, and if they want it, they can take it from there. There was a proposal from the State Department of Transportation to change their sign program. And I'm telling you this, not that there's anything for you to do, but it would affect us, because right now we have directional signs on the highway and in the interstates that tell people that St. Genevieve is here. I assume this, I haven't had a conversation with anybody, but I will at the next week at a Transportation Advisory Council meeting, but this is part of their, we gotta save money somewhere approach. And one of the things they're gonna do is not have to maintain signs. So their proposal is to eliminate signs except for major attractions. And we think this would affect us because the, kind of the attendance counts they have are pretty high. So the mayor's gonna send a letter to, during the comment period of the Department of Transportation, indicating that whatever changes they might make should not disenfranchise communities like St. Genevieve. We'll have to see what happens.
Senator Romano has certainly come out against it. It, it's in relation to tourism-related signs that would direct them to sites or historic sites or historic attractions or attractions anywhere, and it could.
They would just quit maintaining them, or I guess when it comes, if they got old, they, they just wouldn't put them back up. So they're trying to base it on the amount of visitors, but, and we may not hit that threshold. So it would hurt an awful lot of rural communities.
Or, or in our case, you know, how do we know how many people come? It's up to us to prove that we had 25,000 visitors. How do you prove it?
It's important, it's certainly important to us.
So they have one number that they use statewide regardless of the area? Because like, in the city of St. Louis, let's say Mary's Precious Moments collection, and she makes her little museum at her house that she wants people to stop by. That's not a major attraction, especially in a big area like that. However, here, you know, some of our stuff, if it was in a bigger city, it wouldn't be a major attraction, but for us here, it is a major attraction. So they don't base that off of the per capita of the area?
They are saying something in here about rural, urban, or St. Louis, Kansas City, respectively. So I think there are probably things that have to do with the size, certainly the size of the city. At least keep it the way it is.
And finally, it's not on my report, is we had discussions from time to time about a group of residences on the highway south of town, just outside the city limits, kind of across from Stupi's Auto Works, that have wanted to get on city sewer or city water. The cost of doing it, the running a line, the main extension to pick up those five homes was, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars. So it wasn't feasible for them or us to, to do it. Recently had a problem there where the homeowner is kind of desperate and has come back to us and say, "Is there anything we can do?" Steve and I met, he did, he said, "You know, we could, we could set a meter, tap off the Valley Springs water main, set a meter." And they would have to secure easements and do the construction of a water line that would connect to that meter. It would form a homeowners association that would be responsible for paying one bill. How they divide it up would be up to them. And, and then they could, they could trench in a two-inch service line to serve the five homes that are there. And they would have water. We wouldn't have to go to the state for the main extension because we're just tapping off of our existing main. And it would address the problem less expensively than doing it as a, as a water main extension. They are outside the city limits. Our ordinance currently would require them to annex in order to provide that service. So we're gonna talk to them about it and let you know.
What, I guess, what are your thoughts of either way? I mean, we could do it that way, and you still want to abide by the ordinance and say you'd still have to annex if we would end up doing it that way? Or, or obviously you have to change the ordinance, the medical section.
Well, I think we can vary from the ordinance by an action of the board that makes it a one-time special circumstance.
I think we'd need to discuss that, the benefit to the homeowners, the benefit to the city, the cost of both, and just have a pretty good discussion about that.
Okay, I, I think it's something we may, that they would like anyway. They have recently, I believe, attempted a different well, and it didn't go well. I, I don't, I, I think they actually, I don't know that they have any water there at all now.
Let's get them some water and figure out how we did it later. There's no county water down there?
No. And it's, and it's more expensive actually for the county to get there. They really have no way of getting there easily at all.
So you say, if we come through Valley Springs that way and come down and set a bib in there, and they run all the lines themselves, that's really not much of a, of a cost to us, is it?
Well, any cost to us.
Yeah.
Because they pay connection fee and they'll cover the cost of setting the meter and making the pass.
Get them some water.
The question is, who do you build?
Yeah.
And, and right now, they're all gonna need how to decide how to bite up the pie.
I guess they could individually meter it.
Yeah.
Couldn't they, Steve? I mean, that, that would be an option for them, right?
If they formed a homeowners association, they could individually build. And then the homeowners association will take the money that's paid to them and then take the city.
They can call them tomorrow and tell them that so they can get a homeowners association formed quickly and go from there.
That's not a quick process.
I think we'd have to have at least our attorney maybe.
What happened to our attorney?
Does the city have to approve an HLA?
Is that a term tonight? I mean, you had knowledge that it would be there.
Well, they gotta go through the state and all that, get their declarations.
Um, I don't know.
Is it your, I guess?
We just need the legal inspi to consider bill to.
These people don't have any water to their houses right now.
The way I understand it, I don't, I don't know that they do, right?
Is it, is all five homes affected?
I know, I, I know four of them. I, I've heard of four. I don't know if there's five of them.
These are the houses on the right side going south on 61 that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's try to hold them out. I mean, yeah, see, see what we can do.
Okay, the, the, well, we, in our discussions with them, we will certainly see if they're interested in the annexation issue, you know, if they will.
Yeah, in the long run, I'd like to see them annexed into the city too, at the same time.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, the, you know, the, the plan was, was, was not only to help them out in the line extension, we were going to tie it into the back of St. Jude and create a loop there that was going to actually help the water quality for that whole area. But in this case, it's, is, that would be, that's where the expense of six-inch line is gonna come in and all the engineering and all that stuff to go with it. So this would be, that really wasn't feasible unless.
So we can put a two-inch line that would take care of the problem?
Well, they would do it.
They would put in a line.
Yeah, but a two-inch line would do it?
Yeah, of course. From what everybody tells me, it's plenty of water for that many people.
All right.
Yeah. A two-inch line will feed up ten or 12,000.
Okay.
Okay. Have that discussion tomorrow.
Think we've got to come as a group and sit down?
Probably will, probably could. One of us talk to you, one of us talk to me, so.
That's two out of four. And finally, I put it on my city administrative report, so I remembered to do it. And Sue was here tonight. She prepared the first, first quarterly report. It's not first quarter.
First quarter.
Quarter of the budget year. On where we stand relative to our expenditures per, per line item. And so you have that before you, a couple of them you'll note, you know, are, if you figure your quarter of the way through, you should have spent the 25% of your money. In some cases, we haven't spent, we've spent little or none. Those are generally budgeted grant projects that haven't occurred. Or we spent more than the 25%, and those are kind of, for instance, in the DARE, where we received 65, 66% of our DARE money kind of upfront. But by and large, you know, we're pretty well on track. There are only kind of a couple of things that stand out in the expenditure side that, again, are those zeros have to do with just expenditures that are budgeted that are one time and come up later in the year or related projects that haven't happened yet.
Question, the Merchant Street House, what's going on with that? The one that the city now owns.
We're kind of back to where we were. We talked to three different people about taking it down, and none of those have come to fruition. So I'm anxious to find out.
It's taking so long. I thought we got it so we could get it done and do it and.
And I thought we had a person that was gonna do it.
I know, I, I thought so too.
I thought it was cut and dried, he was gonna do it, and that was it, but he, he backed up, so.
Speaking of the DARE, what are we planning, first game plan there? Mike, the officer we lost, wasn't he the one that was teaching in DARE?
Very good question. DARE requires that officers have so many years of service before they're eligible to be a DARE officer. Our school resource officer that's actually a school employee, but is commissioned through us, has five years of experience. She's willing to go through the DARE program under the DARE School, which will cover St. Genevieve. Honestly, I don't know that it's worth the expense and the hassle to, to go through that for Valley, but it's certainly something that we can discuss. I was gonna contact the Sheriff's Department, see if they would be willing to take over Valley until we get somebody qualified to do that or get them, get them through the schooling. The, the, the DARE officer that we have now, Pete Unberferth, has resigned. He's going to, going to Perryville. He is gonna fulfill the rest of his DARE obligation here, including graduation and everything for this year. So that'll give us a year to, to, to make some plans. He's getting the information together for the schooling now. And I'm looking through the, the officers that I have that are, one, eligible and two, interested. And it's, the, the list is not that long right now.
Do you think there's a chance the Sheriff's Department would be interested?
When, when the issue came up before, when we lost Officer Britton, they, they entertained the idea then, but the board was not in favor of that idea at the time because that would have been covering both schools. Essentially, now we'll still be covering St. Genevieve, just not at our expense, but through, through our, through our department. I mean, Officer Clark is, is commissioned through our department, and she's a city police officer. We just don't pay her salary. But again, I don't, certainly don't want to leave Valley without the, without the program if they're still interested in it. But my, my first hope is to, to have an officer on, on staff that will take care of that. But again, I have some time to plan for that since, since Officer Unberferth is gonna see this year out. Thank you.
I guess we need to talk about the house at, at some point. We need to decide when we're just going to bite the bullet and have the thing taken down with, just, just take it down for what, for what we, no trade, no nothing, or whatever we gotta do to get it down.
Have we got a price on taking it down? I think that's what we have to look at right now.
Got an estimate. I haven't got a quote.
Okay, what was your estimate?
Well, he might ask.
I don't want to give that up.
Yeah. That's the wrong thing right now.
Okay.
The guy that works at the pharmacy is not interested anymore, or?
No. I don't think he was really ever interested.
I don't either.
Yeah. I think he was in.
Yeah. I'll tell you after the meeting.
Okay.
I'd, I'd tell you now, but everyone else would get upset, so I'll just let you go.
Well, that's, should we, do you want?
I'll, I mean, let me, let me, let me put it out for a bit.
Okay.
You know, I mean.
So we gotta do something. It's gotta go.
Yeah. We've been taking our feet since. I think we started that a day, didn't we?
I was gonna say, Mayor June.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to get that down.
And the other ones while we're on it?
Yeah. The last conversation was between the city attorney and Rob Puleskamp, who had had conversations with the owners regarding the estate. And he, the city attorney tells me that he agreed to contact her, because she's not returning anybody else's phone calls, and say, "Just you and your brother sign a deed in order we can, you won't have to worry about this anymore." That has not occurred, but hopefully that will occur. If that does, we, we can, we, we have a buyer ready to buy it.
That needs to be in tense focus to move forward with. If we need to have a conversation with whoever, our city attorney or whoever, to make something happen, we don't need this to drag on for weeks on end. Write a letter.
Letters, we've been, certified letters. I tried to get the sheriff of the county where she lives to deliver correspondence to her, and he wouldn't do that because it's not a court document. I tried to get him to agree that.
So there's a basic municipal court. We've done everything we can possibly do.
Yeah, we've done everything.
And, and we're just at their mercy yet.
Just have to go down there and find her and say, "Sign this." Eric's volunteering.
Ain't there people down there you can hide, like you can hear?
Well, it's not a question of her not receiving the information. She's receiving our notices. She's just not following up, not doing it.
No response.
Is she taking registered letters?
She's picking up the letters.
Okay, all right.
What are you supposed to do, build a building there and see as far safety ones? I thought we discussed that. Three hundred dollars a day.
Well, but the issue then is, what do we do? Can we take it down as a consequence of that investigation? The city attorney has advised us that we can do the minimum amount necessary to mitigate the violation. Staff seems to think we can go further than that.
We've just discussed this round and round. I can't remember what's, what's what. I thought at one point we were gonna begin to fine them at the highest level daily to try to motivate them to do something.
She's done, we've done that.
We're, we're fining her every day. What are we doing?
We're, we sent her a notice and saying, "The clock's running and you're being fined," but it's irrelevant.
Are, are we actually doing the process of going through with the fines? Are we, did we threaten her with fines, or are we actually assigning fines? And if so, what do we have to do to legally make her pay? Her and him, whoever it is.
Well, I, I, I think the fining issue is, is, I think what Martin is trying, what we've been trying to say is that as long as she's in Florida, we can assess a million dollars a day. If she doesn't step foot in Missouri, there's nothing we can do about it.
So at no point we can file some type of lawsuit against the heirs to pay these fines?
I think it's.
How's, I mean, I can get, I can rack up a million dollars worth of fines and move across the river, and I'm, I'm safe?
It's a, it's a, you know.
Well, we can't assess fines, number one.
Well.
The court, the court assesses fines.
The court assesses the fine.
What's the court doing? And why are we not?
Well, at this.
Court's trying to resolve it without litigation.
I think the without part, it's too late. It's time to do something.
Well, I, let me just say that, you know, you all have declared it a nuisance. And under our ordinances, that means that we can, with notice, abate the nuisance. We've already put the notice in the paper. They know that we have told them that we can take that building down at this point because that, that's a solution to the nuisance.
I understand that, Peter.
But that costs money.
But I understand that, but if, I'm thinking on the position of the heirs. I'm getting lots of. I'm getting lots of, of letters that say that they're gonna do this or do that. One letter says they're gonna tear it down. Good. Let them tear it down. But we need the proper authority from them to do that. To make us more comfortable from a, if we don't, why?
Right, if they send this letter, says tear it down.
Somebody just give me a quick, one sentence, one sentence answer to, why aren't we doing something? I mean, I realize we've done a lot.
Can we send them?
But why aren't we tearing the house down? Why aren't we doing something physical to improve the neighborhood or the neighbors?
Can we send them a letter and say, hey, we'll tear the house down? You're scot-free if it's okay with you.
I, isn't it? I think what would happen is we tear it down and then the cost of the tear down would end up being a tax lien. In all likelihood, they won't pay the taxes on the property. And eventually the, the state via the county will take that property for the, for all the tax liens and sell it at a tax sale. That's how it generally works.
That, we should be getting closer to that every day.
So we can, we can, and we could presumably get our money at a tax sale, but you all are probably aware that you, you may not get your money at the tax sale. Somebody may buy it for a dollar and then you're out.
We need to get these two houses torn down, cleaned up.
Well, they have satisfied, no matter what they.
And then figure out how we avoid becoming in this situation in the future. This is too long. We, we have, this is, the neighbors, this is ridiculous. I know that we've spent time and I certainly know that everyone has worked hard doing what we've done. We've got to get to the next level. We've got to take some kind of real, physical action to abate these nuisances and to clean our neighborhoods up.
I will, I will get bids for both projects.
Good.
Thank you.
Those are such things you can get a tax lien without tearing it down and selling it.
You only get.
Sell it in front of the courthouse.
The, the problem with the house on, on.
Three years.
Horse Street is.
If we go in and board up the house and secure it the way it needs to be secured in order to mitigate the potential nuisance, whatever we spend, it becomes a tax lien. So we don't have to tear it down to create the tax lien. So we could do that. And then nobody's gonna pay it and that process would go through and three years later, we would own it.
Well, you, when does the three-year start or is, is, is the taxes paid currently?
You're getting fired up, Rick.
I'd say just tear it down.
Just tear it down.
The taxes were paid, the taxes were paid in 2013. I don't know that they've been paid in 2014.
It's the major artery into our city. Everybody else's houses there look real nice and you got this one thing that people see when they drive into our nice little historic town and it looks terrible. And that's one of the first impressions people get of what this town is.
I say we bite, bite the bullet and tear it down.
I know it costs money.
Then worry about it.
And then immediately figure out how to keep from having to do this again.
Right.
I know it costs money to do the demolition, but at some point you have to say that that amount you have to pay is gonna be worth it for the betterment of the community.
Right, Martin, so you get.
Because my neighbor, I'd be here, air.
Oh, I would too.
We'd be raising hell.
I would too. I'd be sitting all every day.
Bob, Bob, you worn down or the, the length of time is stated?
No, get proposals to tear both of them down.
Talk about something.
Yeah, let's go.
All right. Okay, uh, any other reports from anybody?
I got committee reports.
Yeah.
The nine ninety-nine ninety-one, uh, committee met and they approved a new set of bylaws, the, that board did. And they're gonna come to this board for your review and approval after you've read them. If you have any concerns or anything about them. And, uh, didn't, wasn't there actually another set of bylaws maybe, you say, or Martin?
Well, there's an original set of bylaws.
Yeah, do, do we need to compare these two or?
Well, I can get you all a copy of the original set of bylaws.
Yeah, maybe go have both those.
And then every set of bylaws after that were done internally.
Right.
By the board, but weren't ever approved by the Board of Alderman.
Right.
So kind of from that perspective, there's really only one original set of bylaws that was legal.
Okay.
I'll, I'll distribute a copy of that to everybody.
And we'll have the, the set that was approved by the board at the last meeting, the nine ninety-nine ninety-one board. We'll go over that at the next meeting, I hope. And then, as Mayor already pointed out, there's gonna be some reappointments and possibly some new appointments, I don't know.
Those appointments are supposed to come from that, supposed to come from that board. The recommendations are supposed to come from that board.
Right. But we have, how much time prior to the meeting would you need, just a couple of days?
That'd be fine.
If there's names?
They are, uh, very few people left on that board at this point. We did get another resignation this week.
Last week.
Last week.
Karen.
Oh, I know about that, yeah.
So it's, uh, that board is certainly in need of some people if there's some people out there that's interested in doing.
I think, is that a seven-member board? I know there's five in this area, but, no, four, Don, don't count it.
Okay, um, minutes of the regular meeting on December the eleventh, would you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of the closed session of December the eleventh. That's coming around to you.
She'll be coming around.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution two thousand fifteen oh eight, a resolution appointing Tim Pollak to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution two thousand fifteen oh nine, a resolution reappointing Anthony Tony Grass to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move for one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution two thousand fifteen ten, a resolution reappointing Jerry Swent to the St. Genevieve Park Board.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, old business, bill number four thousand and one, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to set the attached proposal and enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and Information Technologies Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Teddy Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Joe Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stupi. Alderman Richard Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Tom Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Beth Caldwell.
Yes.
Eight yes votes, votes, zero no votes. Bill number four zero zero one now becomes ordinance number three nine four zero.
Thank you. Bill number four thousand two, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Board, channel nine ninety-nine ninety-one.
Second.
Roll call please.
Alderwoman Beth Caldwell.
Yes.
Alderman Tom Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rick Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Joe Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Teddy Ross.
Yes.
Eight yes votes, zero no votes. Bill number four zero zero two now becomes ordinance number three nine four one.
Thank you. New business, bill number four thousand three, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a text-caster license agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and Mobile Media Technologies LLC.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, any public comments anymore?
Well, I'm running, and I hate merchants. I'd like to start out by thanking Officer Pippen and Officer Ryan for, I mean, they worked hard the other night. They caught the guys who broke in my house. And they did some outstanding work that night. I mean, they, all night long, looked for them. They caught them in a foot pursuit. They actually got in my house and just sparred from me before they realized that I was there. I was asleep in my chair. And, um, they caught them and then one of the parents came by intimidating me. Then one of the other parents, that's the kids, he's part of the group, but not that group that night. He come by threatening to burn my house down if I went to court. The next night, I get a brick through my window. I went to court and I don't think that kid's gonna be on the streets for a little while. They, they took him in custody, the one. And they're, and then, uh, there's, they recruited two new guys now. It's, it is like, you know, when, you know, the police finally catching them, catching them and they locked up one already, now the second one. Now they got two new guys messing with me. And, I mean, this was so outstanding of this young girl. She came and testified for the, um, probation department that night, right over here. That's all I wanna say. These boys kept going back over to the house, making the plans on what they were gonna do to me. And then when they got in the house, they went back over here and the one kid goes, eh, I'm bored, just go break into cars. So after they broke into my house that night, they went out and broke into cars. And, I mean, this is getting bad, you guys. This is, I mean, they came in my house and I'm pretty sure the chief might, I seen the, um, thing my girlfriend sent to Lieutenant Crump. One of the kids that was directly involved with this, it's his brother or cousin, that same day they came into my house, put, posted on, whatever they do on their cell phones. Uh, I'm not gonna use the racist word he used, but he, the, and, um, don't, today's gonna be a bad day. Put down the gun and, um, the door's gonna open and you're gonna get hurt, you two-legged mother effer. They were posting what they were gonna do to me all that day.
Well, if this has got anything to do with an investigation or any kind of proceedings that's gonna have to do with court, I, I think, and I'm, I'm sure what it's got to do with, with this board or whatever, so.
No, no, I'm letting you guys know that this is still going on in our community. I mean, it's, the, the legal part is over. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm just think we need to know what is going on. And then my other, I guess, is a request. Is there any way we can get together and try to form some kind of a, a community watch? I mean, a real one, where people will actually like, oh, I can do a two-hour a day watch my street. I mean, that's what we need. I mean, we need the community to get the head out of the sand and start watching for ourselves. Because the police can't be at, at, at everybody's house twenty-four hours a day. And these kids are brazen now. I mean, and saying that he had a gun, put down the gun when the door comes open. I, I think we need to step up the citizens and, and, you know, help the police a little bit more and, and, and watch in the streets. I'm just wondering if somebody we can get together and try to come up with something.
We can, um, certainly, we can get with the chief and, and see if there's, uh, some, some groups that can be formed or neighborhood watch programs. I know those programs are out there.
I mean, and, and, I mean, that, we need to do that, really do, because these kids and the parents don't care. I mean, the parents know, they told the probation officer, don't bother us because we're gonna sue you. So.
So, as you pointed out, it's kind of a self-watching program for neighborhoods.
Yes.
And that requires the commitment of the citizens who live in the.
Absolutely.
The defined area to participate.
Yeah.
I know your immediate neighbors are supportive. How? How many neighbors do you think you could get on board for that?
But I, I bet I could get a lot, because I mean, I get people now that will come around my house. Yeah, we get the same thing and, you know, and like I tell them, call the police. Well, we don't want nothing happening like you. Well, the reason why it happened to me, because I was the squeaky wheel, you know what I mean? I was the one that just kept, wouldn't give up. I mean, I'm not gonna give up. Yeah, I, I mean, I think we need, you know, we want just two or three people out there looking, you know? See something, call the police.
I will, uh, we will get together with the chief and see if there's something we can put together.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Carl?
Oh, I'm waiting.
All right.
It's gonna hit one of these days. I'm, uh, sitting up in that chair.
You saving it all up, buddy?
I'm saving it all up for a big bang.
Okay.
I ain't afraid to say it neither.
Under other business, we have an approval of a demolition permit for one hundred Market Street.
Evening.
Oh.
Explain what it is we have.
Um, I may draw awareness, but one hundred Market is the old Crystal Building. It's a, it's a warehouse and Greg Hilbert has his business in there. He's also a structural engineer. The addition, you, your pictures are really poor, I apologize. You have really colored it up. Um, the, there's a thirty by thirty addition on the northeast corner. And, um, one day when Mr. Hilbert was in there, it was just the other day, he noticed that bricks are falling in, um, from the one side that faces the railroad track and, um, it's all Boeing and it's, we consider that fairly dangerous. And so, um, we would like to go ahead and get this demolition approved for the, just the thirty by thirty addition to the original building.
Was he owned and rented?
Uh, Howard Palmer owns the building. Um, I think a couple of years ago, he may have tried to get that taken down and, and ran into some trouble and now he's glad that, I mean, he understands that it's, it's a dangerous situation right now. So wouldn't want anybody to get hurt or for it to fall down and, and damage the, the building that it's attached to. So rather take it down methodically than have it fall down.
Does Mr. Palmer still own that building?
He still owns that building.
Okay, great.
Yeah. It's really close, you know, the, the railroad bends right there and supposedly the right-of-way for the railroad is like fifty feet and it's like, it's in the right-of-way. Um, and I understand the levee may have been right up against that building and the vibrations from the railroad, you know, whatever caused the, the buckling, but it's, it's fairly severe, so.
Are they gonna knock it down completely or just?
They're gonna take the roof off and then, and then take the brick down and reuse the brick on, on the main building and, and some of the windows.
Just that thirty by thirty.
It's just a basic routine, yeah. Yeah.
Peace.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Anything from anybody else? I would like to go into closed session for discussion of.
Moved to go into closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, my goodness.
Alderman Teddy Ross. Alderman Joe Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donald Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Richard Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Beth Caldwell. Alderwoman Beth Caldwell.
Yes.
Alderman Tom Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Jokers.
Yes.
We could just call everybody Alder.